I call to order the May 17, 2016, meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. First order of business will be to swear in our newest commissioner. Please raise your right hand and repeat it. You can stand if you like. Go ahead, stand up.
Well, you have to stand too.
I, T.O. Owens.
I, T.O. Owens.
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
And of the state of Colorado.
And of the state of Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties.
And faithfully perform the duties.
Of a member of the Planning Commission.
Of a member of the Planning Commission.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
There you go. That's it.
T.O., would you...
Okay. And Ms. Brown, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Randy Caswell.
Present.
David Goff. Steve Hammond.
Here.
John Sullivan.
Here.
John Kraus. T.O. Owens.
Here.
Patricia Cowan.
Here.
I move to excuse Mr. Goff and Mr. Kraus from the meeting. Commissioners, cast your votes. And that passes five to zero. All Commissioners present voting in favor. The minutes of the April 19, 2016, meeting have been submitted for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes?
No.
No. Seeing none, the meetings, the minutes are approved as printed. And we'll move on to general business. There are no general business items. And we'll move on to reports. There are no reports, report items to discuss this evening. And would you all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Told you I can't hear. It just shows how much of a leader you are. All right, moving on to petitions and communications. This is a time when anyone may address the commission regarding items that are not listed as public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearings scheduled on tonight's agenda are the Land Development Code Amendment, McKinley Farms rezoning, and McKinley Farms preliminary plat, and the Moon Gulch Substation at Candelas Comprehensive Plan Amendment, Substation rezoning, and the Outline Development Plan Amendment. Additionally, we would ask that you would hold comments that you may have regarding any application which has been filed with the city or which is likely to be filed with the city until the public hearing on those items where we will welcome your comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the commission regarding anything else? Seeing none, we'll move on to public hearings. At this time, I'll explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given an opportunity to make a presentation. After the presentation, I will ask those in favor of the applicant to speak and then those in opposition. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all the testimony has been heard, the public input portion of the hearing will be closed and questions will be taken from the commission. I would now like to swear in anyone who wishes to speak in any public hearing matter before this commission tonight. Please rise, raise your right hand, and I'll swear you all in now. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in matters before this commission is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer, "I do."
I do.
Thank you, you may be seated. All right, the public hearings on tonight's agenda. Let's see, move on to, yeah. First, we'll do LDC 20015-0007 Land Development Code Amendment, and I believe this is to be continued. I just need a motion to continue it. Did you, you didn't show up. Did you care to make a motion? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move that LDC 2015-007 Land Development Code Amendment to Section 5.2.38 Telecommunication Facilities and DISH Antennas and Section 10.3 Definition of Words, Terms, and Phrases be continued to the meeting of 7 June 2016 at 6:30 PM.
Is there any discussion? Commissioners, cast your votes. And that passes five to zero. All Commissioners present voting in favor of the continuation. All right, and the second item on tonight's agenda, we'll do the Moon Gulch Substation at Candelas, which also needs to be continued. Is there a motion to continue that?
I can't find the page. There you go. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Moon Gulch subdivision at Candelas Comprehensive Plan Amendment, land use designation rezoning, and Candelas Outline Development Plan Amendment Four be continued to the meeting of 21 June 2016 at 6:30 PM.
Is there any discussion? Commissioners, cast your votes. And that passes five to zero. All Commissioners present voting in favor. All right, moving on to McKinley Farms. McKinley Farms rezoning and McKinley Farms preliminary plat. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
Yes, they've met all of their listing requirements.
And the staff report, posting log, and affidavit of mailing are thereby made, hereby made a permanent part of the record. Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
There are none.
Okay. Is there a representative of the applicant? I presume it's the two of you. Can you go ahead and state your name and address for the record? If you could spell your last name, that'd be appreciated.
Yes. My name is Dennis, excuse me, my name is Dennis Gray, G-R-A-Y. My address is 8946 Rutgers Street in Westminster, Colorado, 80031. And I am the, I'm the applicant. May I continue on from here? Okay. And I'd like to, first off, thank the commission and as well as the staff. And I've got a couple, two or three that I'd like to introduce also that may interject if there's a question. Engineer from R&amp;R Engineering, Cliff Nitzel, Renee Starvas, and my realtor, Terry Herrod. And the representative residents that showed up, thank you for showing an interest in what we're doing. Thank you very much. All right. Just real quickly, gotta get this correct first. Real quickly, I retired in 2014, moved to Denver, Colorado, from Illinois. At that time, the, purchased some property which my daughter lives in, and then next happening, she was able to adopt a young girl, which was six months old. At that time, the property that she was living in and I rented to her wasn't suitable, in my opinion, being on the corner, that she'd had good play area. So I started looking and thinking, you know, I came out here to support my daughter and my granddaughter and kind of help them out a bit. Well, I stumbled across Bill McKinley was selling this property, hence the McKinley Farms. What I will start off with here is, real quickly, and the property lies from 87, excuse me, from West 51st Street, 8745 and 8895 West 51st. The two homes, which on 8895, a stretch of ground goes through all the way to 52nd Street. And then to the side of it, an acreage that Bill had purchased at one time, vacant land which was on 52nd Street with a ditch dividing the two pieces of property. On the intent, quite honestly, I think I missed one. Hold on just a second here. Okay. All right. Well, I need my glasses. I hope you can see this. Anyways, there's a comprehensive plan and the current zoning, okay? So based on that, if any questions, bring them up now, but I suppose that those are In the very beginning, I gotta say that the two homes on West 51st Street is what you see on the right side. Of course, on the 8745 is where Bill McKinley lived. And quite honestly, became a very good friend with Bill, but he is a hoarder. And I mean, to the extent. And it was very rough. I didn't even want to go into it, even after my realtor suggested I look at the interior of the house if I'm buying it. Do I have to? Well, I didn't want to, and I did, and I just walked right straight through and came out the back door. It was bad. The 8895 was good enough that Terry, my realtor, thought that it could be rented. And I rented it for a little bit, period of time, while waiting to go through some of the process that we're doing. And at that point, both of the houses weren't deemed even possible to, to actually recreate, put back on, put back on a sale or even try to rent. I wouldn't rent either one of them myself, but that's my opinion. But it's going to be, my opinion also, a betterment for the community, the betterment for the 51st Street neighbors. It certainly is going to be a better eye appeal than what these two are. And what you see on the left is the vacant property from 52nd Street, from the northeast corner looking southwest. That is where my daughter, on the very back left corner, I intend to assist her in getting a lot so she can build a new home there, my granddaughter can have a better place off of the street and in a more calm neighborhood. The intent, we've got landscape planning already being done by request of the staff from city, and everything's on the go that I know of plans to reestablish trees. My intent is to keep as much greenery as possible. You know, the idea of McKinley Farms is exactly that. I want it to be a quiet, I want it to be a reserved community. After all, my granddaughter and my daughter are gonna live there. My hope is to try to, with the method and the type of homes, to be built on there without selling the lots until the builder agrees to it, that they will be a farm-themed atmosphere home. They will be a board-on-bat siding, they will be a gable-type roof, a metal-type roof with kind of a wraparound porch. I want it to be a farm theme, and that, I believe, will enhance nothing more than the city of Arvada's community also. It's to be quiet, and my intent is to make it the best I can, keeping as much greenery as possible also. This is, this is an elevation, architectural elevation idea, that what the homes are to look like. Of course, the builder will have different ideas on this, but that is the intent, the frontal elevation, the sides, and the back, whatever. But this is the intent of the homes. The one primarily to the right is what I would, would hope for, kind of reminds me of the farm-themed atmosphere. A little white, maybe a two-story common, something you'd see, somebody sitting out in the front porch enjoying the, the community and the area around, the nice ground that I've got. And I gotta say, and I've talked to Bill a couple times since I bought his property. He's asked me where it's gone and how things are going, and he liked the idea. He didn't want me to follow the name of his family that owned the property in that area for a long time. He didn't want me to do that. He wanted me to name it after my granddaughter. I thought, no, gotta give respect to your family. So that is it. Basically, in a nutshell, my hopes are that we can get this farm-themed community built, and with your blessings, it'll happen. Thank you. Oh. Oh, my realtor had us suggest this. On the very back left corner of that property, I think you can barely see it on that photo to the left, in the very southeast corner, I had, without knowing, I had, prior to all this going down, had a arboriculturist come in, licensed, three of them, arboriculturists come in and, and do some mitigation of trees, which I shouldn't have done, I understood. But what had happened is I had done it prematurely. And with that being said, one of the trees that all three had commented on, on the very left southeast corner, is a tree, it's called an Austrian willow. And kind of recognized for me that all three of the arborists made mention, don't do anything to this tree. This is, this is probably one of the oldest and one of the largest Austrian willow trees I've ever seen. So all three of them said the same thing. So they basically just groomed it up, cleaned it up, and we kept it. And my intent was, in the very beginning, I didn't know, this is all green to me, it's all, all Greek. I don't have any clue on developing process. But the thing of it is, I had suggested in the very beginning that I'd like to name that street that's coming in, Austrian Lane, after the tree. But I understand the postal system has something to say about that, too. So I'll leave it rested at that, and I thank you very much for your time and the staff's help and participants that did show up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Appreciate it. So the process will work, and so we'll open it up to the public. And first, I'd like to invite people who are in favor of the application to speak, if there's anybody. Sure. Go ahead and state your name and give us a spelling of your last name.
Terry Herrod, H-A-R-R-O-D, and I do not get a shopping discount in London, just so you know.
And I'm sorry, I didn't say it, but your name and address, your address as well for the record.
My address is 2220 West 56th Avenue, Denver, 80221. I am here with Dennis as the realtor on the project, and I would like to say something that he forgot to mention, and that is, when he looked at this piece of property, there are many, many trees that line both the east and the west borders of the property between both 52nd all the way down to 51st. One of Dennis's main objections, no, one of his main things that he wants to keep are those trees. So he has had the land and the trees trimmed, which had not been done in maybe the last 40, 50 years, the dead branches taken out, the dead trees taken out, so that the living trees can stay. And that is one of the features that we are using in promoting this property as a farm, it's contemporary farmhouse is what I will be using to market them. And all these huge trees, 75, 80-foot trees that border the property on either side, so that we have preserved the farm feel in this part of Arvada. And I think that that's really important. And Dennis didn't want to just brag on himself, but I'm gonna brag on him because he spent a lot of money out of his own pocket taking care of those trees so that they would continue to be. So almost every lot in that division will have a, at least a huge tree on the backside of the lot, and then there'll be new trees that get planted along the two streets. So.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public who would like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anybody who would like to speak against the application? Go ahead and come up to the podium, and I'll swear you in. I don't think you were sworn in earlier. So let me get the, give me one second.
My name is Pauline Henning, and I live just down the street from this at 8695 West 51st Avenue. I didn't put my name down or anything.
No worries. Did you get, so you got the spelling of your name and your address. Let me just give you the, let me swear you in real quick.
I'm sorry?
I need to swear you in. Can you just raise, raise your right hand?
Oh, sure.
Yeah. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in matters before this commission is the truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer, "I do."
I do.
Thank you. You may continue.
I hope I'm, I'm just, I don't want this to happen. Am I in the right place to say that right now? Okay. Yeah, like I said, I live right down the street from this. It's zoned as agriculture, and it has a very agriculture feel to our neighborhood. And I mean, it's nice that they're coming in and cleaning it up and maybe putting some new buildings in, but I guess my concern is that rezoning it so that it's not agriculture anymore, but it's residential, is going to change the neighborhood, and, and it's gonna change the things that we can do since our properties are zoned agriculture. And I guess that's my concern. Like, a lot of us have chickens and roosters, and I know that the person next door had horses at one time, and, and it just is a farm feel. I mean, they say they're gonna, intent is to have a farm feel, but if they're not even the builders, then who knows what a builder's gonna do? And the fact that a lot of those properties have huge yards around them, and so that gives it the farm feel. Once you build homes that have just smaller yards and are just like a cookie cutter place, you just, you just lose all of that. So, you know, I guess on one hand, I'm glad that they're fixing up those two houses, which are kind of an eyesore. I just wish that they could maybe not have so many houses there, so that we really could keep it agriculture. I mean, I don't, I guess I don't really understand why you have to change it to residential from agriculture.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak against the application? No? Okay. So the applicant, would you would like to make, would you like to make it a rebuttal to the comments?
Thank you.
Or, maybe rebuttal's not the right word, maybe you just want to make some additional comments that address them, the concerns?
Ma'am, I, I do agree with you, exactly.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gray.
Okay.
Please direct your comments to the commission.
I'm sorry. Right. I do agree with the comment, okay? That would be my feeling also. To, without knowing the full aspect of the intent of this, if I could put one house in, in the middle of that property and afford to do one house in the middle of that property and leave the goats that was actually existing in that grazing land, I would do it. But I can't afford to do that, okay? The lady was correct. The houses were shabby, at best on 51st Street. The intent is to call it McKinley Farms. The, the volume of homes in there, I hope that nobody gets the wrong intent, the, there is only going to be, on this property to the left, the open ground, there's only going to be eight total single-family homes on that 1.697 acres, I think it is. The, in the density of that, I will assure you, is gonna be a whole lot less than what you normally see in a, in a residential community on a street. They're gonna have a little bit more yards, they're gonna have a little more greenery there. When, when I say that the intent is to have an agricultural theme-built home, I'll, I'll better say it like this, so it makes it easier to understand, is I will not sell a lot to a builder that builds anything other than what I want on it. It's gonna be a farm-themed home. The builders that I'm talking about, the ones I've already talked to, if they don't have intent to build a farm-themed home on my ground, they don't get to buy it. That's it, in a simple nutshell. It's gonna be a farm-themed atmosphere. Granted, we're not gonna have horses and cattle and sheep and goats again, but 52nd Street is to have two, two-family, two-story duplexes. It's not gonna be overwhelming, and it's not gonna be congested. It's actually gonna add, my opinion, it's gonna add a lot more aesthetic value on that end of what's currently there. And on the 52nd Street, quite honestly, the lady next door, Susan Horseman, to the east of me, I've talked with her, she's got the common grounds with the buffalo statues that are in it, you might recognize that. She and I have talked, and she's asked me the same thing. I've talked with my engineer, Cliff, and I've explained to him that, listen, I want to keep everything within her realm of her common grounds. I don't want anything blocking the view. I've intended, there was an encroachment on the fence, she and I have talked about it, that's gonna be corrected, I can, I can get that back. I'm even trying to keep her same-style fence as she has on the north end of her property to the east of my property. I'm trying to keep everything natural for the neighbors as well. The neighbor to the south of, and east of me at 8745, where Bill McKinley used to live, that couple, young couple, Tracy and Andy, they have chickens. Matter of fact, we've talked a number of times, and my granddaughter, living at the back corner of their property, has really been, been told that she can help with the chickens and gather eggs and that sort of thing. So bottom line is, my intent is to do that and not to allow a builder to build a cookie cutter type home. It's going to be on my ideas.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gray. Okay. At this point, I will close the public input portion of the hearing and open it up to questions from the Planning Commission. Mr. Henning?
Question, question. Press the button. Question for staff. The, it looks like the property to the east and to the west is A1. The property to the north is A1 or R1. I'm confused of the dotted line there on the south. Is that Jeffco and not Arvada? South of the inter urban trail?
Yes, that's, that's the city limits.
Okay. So that's the city's limits, okay. Thank you. The question from the public was about why can't it remain agricultural? How many houses could you put on it if it remained agricultural?
The minimum lot size is five acres for agricultural, so these, none of these lots actually meet the minimum lot size requirements.
Excellent.
Any other questions from Commissioners? I had a question for staff. So there was a note in there about there was not gonna be a park in there, and he was gonna be collecting fees in lieu of. So I was just wondering, we have this goal of having parks within a 10-minute walking distance. Do we have data, do we know how close the nearest park is?
I know that there are some parks close by. There's a school nearby. I would have to pull up a map to see how close the nearest park is. But our code does allow for fees in lieu to be collected if they aren't dedicating park land with the development. The land dedication for parks works best with larger subdivisions or multifamily subdivisions. In this case, they are choosing to opt out of building a park and providing the fees in lieu.
And then I had some questions about the abandoned land. It wasn't readily apparent to me where that is. Is that just a little strip that runs along the, the east side of the proposed area?
It's basically where the bayou ditch runs through the two eastern properties. There's a gap there. And so the property to the west runs all the way through, and then the property to the east, the two properties are separated. So it's, it's basically, there's an ownership record there, but they haven't paid taxes in a long time, and Jefferson County can't get in touch with the person that owns it of record, and so Dennis is working through Jefferson County to acquire that property.
Okay. So it's the, it's the little gap between the blue lines and the north and south sections?
It shows up better on the development plans.
Okay. Any other questions from Commission? Nope. Ms. Connell? Oh, I'm sorry.
Rob has found that there's the four, four, four-acre lake park, which is basically right across the street and just to the west, where that lake is.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Ms. Connell, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. The ditches, those ditches that are in there are no longer in use, is that correct? Are you no longer serviced by a ditch company or anything like that? As far as water rights and like that?
The bayou ditch is existing and it is working. That's on the, the area of the property you were talking about. That is existing, and I'm attempting to work with the president there to get the easement there. On the other northwest corner, there is another ditch. On the other northwest corner, there is another ditch, and the northwest corner is the Rhodes Middle Ditch, and I'm working with that, that ditching group also. So there are two ditches, and they both are existing. They are working.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's no changes to the ditches at all, the easements. I'm not doing anything with either one, so everything should be good there.
So, I'm sorry, but we, we've already closed the public input portion. Okay, you're fine? So I, I think we've already closed, Mr. Simpson?
Yeah.
Yeah. We've already closed the public input portion, I'm sorry. All right. I had a question. Okay, so I wanted to clarify as well. The, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the comp plan map. The comp plan area, or the area that, that we're talking about in the comp plan is currently marked as, as medium density?
Yes, medium-density residential.
Okay. So last time we reviewed the comp plan was last year, and, and at that point, it was, it was evaluated that, that this part, that this area would be a good fit for medium-density housing at that point, right?
Yes, due to its proximity to the Gold Line Station, Old Town Arvada, and yes, so this sets the vision for future development and redevelopment as it comes through.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from commission? If not, then I'll accept a motion. Mr. Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I move that Z2015-006 McKinley Farms rezoning from City of Arvada A1 Agricultural to R1 Residential, one and two-family residence district located at 8745 to 8795 West 51st Avenue, be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based upon the findings of fact and the approval criteria on page 10 of the staff report.
Is there any, Ms. Caswell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a quick comment. Infill development can be really challenging, even for experienced developers, so I just wanna commend you on taking this on in an area that the city has, has identified, as the chairman's comments just illustrated, has identified in the comp plan for this particular purpose. So thanks for bringing the project forward and for having a vision for it and working with your neighbors on the project as well. I'll be supporting it.
And Mr. Hannon?
I wanna echo those comments. This is a great way of using a very small part that can't really remain residential because of si, or agricultural because of size. I applaud you for trying to stick with the history of the area and ask you to keep, keep up the good work in that area.
And Ms. Connell?
Yes, in reference to maintaining the history of it, this certainly does add something like that, and I agree with what the other commissioners have said.
Yeah, and I'd like to add comments. I, I feel likewise, and I, I think that we're probably fortunate that somebody who has taken control of it, who will, who seems to have passion for adding, you know, making sure that there's some care involved. To, to the citizens who are concerned, I would like to just make sure that you're aware that there's a series of process, in this process, and this is the first step, it's the preliminary plat, and that's why there's not a lot of detail around what the actual buildings will look like and things. As it progresses, there will be other next steps, and there'll be other opportunities for public input, and they'll have to come back to the commission again. So if, if you do see that there's a large divergence from the vision that's been expressed, you, you will have other opportunities to weigh in at that point. So I wanted to make sure that you're aware and comfortable. I'm sorry? Was that a mis, a mistake, inaccurate?
A straight zoning district is not that you may have in mind, a PUD, but it's a straight zoning district, so the next steps are really a final, a final plat. Yeah, it's, there, there, there is no public hearing with respect to elevations, architectural elevations and so forth in a straight zoning district.
Okay, am I ahead of myself? I was thinking that this is, there's a preliminary plat happening, so that there'd be follow-on...
There'll be a final plat, that's an administrative process.
I see, okay. All right.
And may I, I'm sorry, may I just add to that? That I just wanted to correct that the zoning is Ri, not R1, which is, it's hard to see in that, but yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so let me amend those comments. What I would just say then to the, to the public is, if you have concerns and you wanna continue to work with staff, and just make sure that your concerns are addressed throughout that process. Is that fair? I'm sorry, Ms., Ms. Brown? I'm sorry, no, we're...
How, how would I ask them a question?
You continue, you would work with them during business hours, continue to connect with them. Am I giving bad direction, Mr. Simpson?
I'm sorry?
Am I giving bad direction?
No, that's fine. The staff is always happy to answer questions from, from, from citizens and residents. They can make a phone call, they can use the Ask Arvada process online, they can come in to the counter. Staff will always be happy to try to answer those questions.
Okay.
Okay. You, you, there is another, well, first of all, you know, there's, there's two motions to be made tonight, and of course, a vote on this first motion.
So commissioners, cast your votes. And that passes five to zero. All commissioners present voting in favor. And is there another motion? Mr. Hannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I keep pressing the button and nothing happens, so I'll hit it one more time. I move that PP 2013-003 McKinley Farms preliminary plat located at 8745 to 8895 West 51st Avenue, be recommended to City Council for approval, subject to the conditions stated in the staff report, items one through three on page 12. This motion is based on the findings of fact and the approval criteria on pages 11 and 12 of the staff report.
And is there any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, commissioners, you may cast your votes. And that also passes five to zero. All commissioners present voting in favor. All right, so the next steps would be for you to just, I'm sure you're probably already aware of them, you wanna connect with staff, and they'll educate you on what the, how to move through the process. Sounds like I'm probably not the one to tell you how to do that, so. Thank you very much. So moving on to other items, staff, are there any other items to consider this evening?
A couple of items here for you this evening. The next meeting will be June 7th, and we will have four items on that agenda. Three of them will be land development code amendments related to self-storage, wireless communications, and special events. And then one set of hearings on the Dutch Brothers Coffee location at 8399 Rolston Road. That'll be a zoning and a PDP. And then one other item I wanted to just get the opinion of Planning Commission on this evening, is if you're familiar with the way we handle cases at City Council, staff usually gives a very brief introduction to the case and, and states our recommendation in the case before the planning, or before the council opens up the public hearing. And we were wondering if you would like us to do the same thing for the Planning Commission and for the purpose of the public, so they can get a better feel for what the case you're discussing is. And so that would be a very brief, less-than-a-minute introduction, and we just wanted to see if that's something you'd be interested in entertaining.
For me personally, I think that'd be helpful, actually. I've often felt awkward that we went straight into the presentation from the applicants, because they come from a specific point of view, so having a point of view of staff would be helpful for me. All right. Any other commissioners have thoughts on that? No?
We will give that a try for the next few meetings and see how that goes, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we are adjourned.